Federal funding opportunities that have come forward for State Street.
Okay, there we go.
There we go. So last year, when Valley Regional Transit received their CARES dollars, we were able to offset some of our regular contribution and hold hold aside some to invest in federal funding opportunities for a large grant for State Street. So we could leverage those dollars for bigger projects than we normally would. So it was an exciting opportunity to really capitalize on that federal, this federal rescue dollars. We have used that to support VRT and their request for a federal earmark. That earmark will be able to poise VRT to apply for a larger grant later down the road. You can see these numbers aren't quite accurate because the earmark has continued to move forward. And the amounts have changed just slightly, but over the next couple of years, this is the plan to be able to pursue a large build grant or some other kind of federal grant by 2024. So these earlier investments in 2022 and 23 all have the goal of setting up the corridor to be able to be competitive for one of those larger grants. The congressional earmark that has now moved forward will hopefully be able to pursue real time information at stops along State Street. Easier fare collection off board fare payment so people don't pay when they get on the bus. They pay at the stop and bike racks shelters and benches. Next Karen will tell you a little bit more about the technical analyses and studies that have been happening on the corridor.
Okay, I wanted to start off with just the overview map of State Street and just show you geographically where four of the projects are going forward. Okay, here we go. Okay, so the first is continuation of the downtown Boise implementation project, which mainly was restoring pavement through ACHD projects downtown, but it was also coordinating them with CCDC and some streetscape. So one of the last ones here is a stretch of State Street from about second to 16th skipping the 15th street intersection. And I did want to highlight one, just so you know, this is coming next summer. Two, it does have streetscape and some, including some curb and gutter that really needed to be replaced. And we've got some great opportunities in ACHD working with us on a bunch of bulb outs, both on the east west streets and on the north south streets and a whole bunch of locations, which will really help pedestrians and bikes get across. Coupled with that, we've got some opportunities for some green stormwater to actually scrub our stormwater since a lot of the north end and the downtown just goes straight into the river. So we're going to be exploring that further as well. The State Street and Pierce Park intersection, which was, has been delayed. It was due to be constructed earlier. Now we're looking at a year of 2026 in the draft five year work plan for ACHD. Then the next two, we're going to be talking about on separate slides coming up. So one is the alternative analysis from Whitewater Park into Main Street Station. And then moving out from Whitewater Park to Bogart Lane is a transit operational analysis. And we'll have a separate slide on that too. So any questions just on any of these overall? That's probably a bad question to ask since I didn't go into detail on the other two. So we'll just move along. So the alternative analysis is just wrapping up right now. And this is looking at from this point here at Whitewater Park Boulevard, like I said, to get down to Main Street Station. And this analysis took in demographics, bike ped, walk sheds, jobs, traffic signals, timing, distance. There were a whole bunch of layers that went into this. Other, a few other, and these were the alternatives. The end game is that we're looking at the State Street alignment being the one that we would commit to partially because of the uses that are on State Street, including the Y, the grocery store and the other businesses that are at the 15th, 16th location that you would pick up on State Street as opposed to some of these other alternatives. We may in the end look at what it would take if we ran something down Main Fairview to connect the people on Main Fairview to State Street, but that's just something we'll look at down the line.
I just wanted to clarify, clarify real quick, Karen. This is for the State Street bus rapid transit, correct?
Well, and right, right now it's actually for the buses where we would have them. I mean, we, we could have looked at just running buses in a different way for this last connection. But it would also be for bus rabbit transit.
Okay, cool.
Thank you. Yeah, just where we're building to go forward now.
Excellent.
Then moving on to the, and sorry, on that, this alternative analysis is going to the VRT board next month.
Okay. Karen, just a note on that. And I'm going to ask, I was going to ask this at VRT, so I'll ask it now. Did we look at just doing a connection between Fairview and the state routes at Whitewater Park Boulevard rather than deviating the state route?
Rather than devi-
Did, did the analysis include keeping on State Street, but also doing your connection to Fairview somehow?
It's, it's more, it's more nuanced than that. So a bigger picture with Valley Connect 2.0 does have a route coming down from 27th and you know, points to the north here that would connect Fairview Maine to State Street. Which that's the end game with Valley Connect is that we would have a whole network that goes east, west and north, south, that not everything would need to come to Main Street Station to be this pub and spoke. So that does of course require trans or transfers, which we're going to have to get that figured out to have a better network. This analysis did look at if we wanted to, let's say in the peak hour, when we got to five or 10 minute headways, would we want to run some of them down State Street? Half of them, you know, or every other one. And then the other one down Whitewater Park Boulevard is what it looked at. And we, Boise PDS definitely recommend it. Let's just stay on State Street. It keeps it consistent. It's not confusing for people to go wait. Are we switching between one and the other? Plus, as I said, the land uses that are on that section of state that don't get picked up if we went over to Whitewater. And then on top of that, this slide just shows all of our existing routes. And you can see Maine and Fairview is very well served. That it really for simplicity and the commitment that we made to State Street, that you would just know that it's a five minute headway, a 10 minute headway and not know that it's going to shift. So that's, that's the direction we're going right now. However, the study did leave it open to say, if we get down the lane, down the lane, down, down the ways and lane just seemed confusing there. And our population, be it jobs or residents was such that we really thought it was worth that we ought to have some other connection or that we really ought to split it. We can reconsider at that time, but we weren't going to go there from the get go.
Thank you.
So moving on to the transit operational analysis, this is, this study just kicked off. So this is looking at State Street from Whitewater out to Bogart. And just figuring out, how can we move transit in an effective manner? So it's our potential improvements and it's reviewing and looking at alternatives to the whole HOV, the bus pullouts, the business access transit lanes. We're going to look at current data on, you know, travel times, the signals, all of that. And schedule wise, we're looking at a draft of this in October. And that's our update for what projects are wrapping up and what's happening on State Street right now. And if you have other questions, we can stand for them. Otherwise we'll transition over to Matt to give you his update.
So Karen, I'll ask the question I always ask here, which is, when are we going to get around to amending the T-top so that we can quit talking about HOV lane configurations and start talking about a configuration that can work on curb running lanes?
Well, I'm hoping that this analysis is going to-
Is, is this the one that's going to do that?
I mean, we are going to look at the legal ramifications of the bus ass, the bat lanes, HOV, yeah, all of that is-
Okay. All right. I just want to clarify that that's what that was saying on the record.
That is, that is my understanding that we're looking at that.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Afternoon, Madam President, Council members. Thanks for having me today. My name is Matt Edmund. I'm a director of parking mobility with CCDC. Today I'll be talking to you, giving you an update on the State Street, primarily the feasibility study that was just completed, the draft and the draft quarter framework diagrams. So as a little bit of background, this, this effort follows some 17 years of, of planning on State Street. As the only major corridor north of the Boise River between downtown Boise and parts west, it can't feasibly be widened to accommodate single document vehicles and maintain a level of services. The valley continues to grow. So for some while now, a number of public agencies and the Treasure Valley City of Boise Partner Cities along State Street, ACHD, ITD, Valley Regional Transit and Compass have been looking at how to get more mode share into, well, more share in other modes, most notably transit. So you can see some of the plans, the quarter strategy study in 2004, market analysis in 2007, TOD guidelines in 2008. The most notable one, Transit Traffic Operation Plan in 2011. And then recently the State Street Corridor Transit Area Development Plan in 2019 that has been adopted into the city's comp plan, I believe, last year. This effort builds on those and really well, much work's been done on the planning of the transportation and transit aspects of the quarter, what, what it's going to look like between the curb lines, what the buses are going to run like. Now we're seeking to help facilitate the kind of compact mixed use, mixed income development that's supportive of and supported by these transportation systems. And like I said, continuing to build on that, that TOD plan from 2019. So here's what the study area looks like shaded in red. It is completely within the city of Boise. It runs approximately six miles from 27th Street out to Horseshoe Bend Road. It's approximately 575 acres. That does include all the right of way. And you can see seven circles on there. Four are the primary nodes that were depicted and contemplated in the 2019 TOD plan. On the other three are secondary nodes. You can see their name there. So real quick on it-
Can you go back to that map? I thought, I thought there was a little bit of land on the south side of State Street at Glenwood that was in the city of Boise. That's all Garden City on the south side.
Madam President, to the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay, I just was mistaken. That's why I just-
Basically goes north side only, right at the Jalopy jungle. That's Garden City.
All right, thank you.
The right of way though is completely within city limits out to Horseshoe Bend, so. So we're seeing a fair amount of development out there already. And a lot of folks will ask, well, why urban renewal? And I think the simplest answer is this, to deliver development outcomes that have significant public benefit, which the market would not otherwise deliver on its own. So some examples of that are mixed use development. True mixed use is fairly hard, can be fairly hard to finance. So should we go in and acquire a property and put it out to a quest for proposal? I can, I can help with that. Landscape buffers and other kinds of, as the highway district will call them, non-transportation elements, funding those, parks and public space. And yes, the, the city can do a number of these, but when we work with developers, we can be quite a bit more nimble in terms of helping them, maybe setting, you guys set a requirement, we can help them to resource that. Pathways, local streets and access management. I think we've seen a fair amount of this on State Street already. While, while the, while ACHD and ITD can restrict access onto the, onto the arterial, they can't really do that if it's the only frontage that a parcel has. If we can provide the carrot to that stick to help fund those local streets, that can be difficult to exact. We can, we can provide a better built out street network. Historic preservation, an example of this would be the Hayman House down off of River Street. We acquired that and transferred it to the city when we let out the Ash Street properties for the townhomes, what, what became the townhomes. Public structured parking, you can get better mixes of uses and make more efficient use of land. If you can get shared parking and sometimes that would be public structured parking. And then site remediation. Also, one that's not listed on here is local match. And we've anticipated potentially providing some local match for Valley Regional Transit for capital projects. Should they not get it all cleared out the next couple of years here?
Matt, question about one other use that we've been beginning to dip our toe in, in some of the existing districts and that's affordable housing. Isn't it true that that's also something that urban renewal could potentially help with?
Madam President, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So real quick recap on the process to date. We defined the State Street boundaries, working with Planning and Development Services back in 2018, 2019. We had an eligibility study completed. And the city council did make a finding of necessity by resolution back then. We were hung up by COVID a little bit, but we did get going again last year. SB Friedman Development Advisors did a market assessment for us. MIG, our main consultant, started planning context and assessment. We also hired Preservation Solutions to do a cultural resource survey of the corridor to find historically significant structures and properties out there. And we had our first open house in the fall. In the winter, we moved on to a gap analysis and district goals. We had quadrant consulting do an infrastructure expansion analysis, seeing what was out there on our utilities, where gaps are, and putting together cost estimates for what it would take to expand and build out the district. We also had a revenue model, how much increment we would expect to see over the 20 year lifespan of a district. And we had our second open house in the spring and that, well, I'll get into the open houses next, I guess. So we're now in the spring of 2021. I'm presenting to you the, the draft framework maps and feasibility study that I believe was attached in a read ahead memo you got. And working on draft plan narrative, following that, starting next week, we will have our third and final open house and then look to finalize all these documents. So real quick on the market analysis that SB Friedman did for us. You can see the capture of, of all the development in the city since 2010 in the corridor. So fairly significant for the multifamily, about one in five there. And single family residential and retail was about an eight to 10% capture. Was it not so much on office hospitality or industrial? And over the next 20 years, here's what we expect to see along the quarter. Roughly 1,100 units, a single family residential, 2,600 of multifamily attached, 362,000 square feet of retail, 50,000 office, possibly a small hotel.
Matt, back on that last slide, why, why is the TOD capture less than the URD demand?
TOD, so that is the nodes that were in the-
Just the nodes, okay.
Yeah, that's the nodes that, that were in the TOD plan and the interstitial areas is the rest.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned earlier, so far we've done two online surveys. I've met with five of the six neighborhood associations that have some portion of their, their area within the study area. The final one scheduled for this Thursday. We've met with the State Street MOU partners, both the exec team and the technical teams during their meetings. Talked to ACHD commission about this in anticipation. We'll have to get an agreement in place with them to be in compliance with recent legislation. Also met with the Boise School District, Valley Regional Transit. As I mentioned, we did a cultural resource survey on the corridor and that was in consultation with the state historic preservation office in Preservation Idaho. And did present the Garden City Council, although none of the district is in Garden City, obviously. It, it abuts a significant portion of Garden City. And then lastly, we've had this website up for a little over a year now. So survey one basically asked about where people, what their destinations are along the corridor, what kind of barriers they see. And then lastly, suggested improvements. And here are the real hotspots for those suggested improvements. You can see amenities for walking, biking, transit, better connections to the surrounding neighborhoods, improved streetscapes. And lastly, attracting local businesses to commercial areas. I feel like because of this is named after a street, a lot of people automatically focus on kind of on the street and on the transportation aspect. So I feel like that's kind of a notable one, the economic development aspect of it. In the spring survey, we asked people to prioritize these suggested improvements with notional budgets. So we really have four main buckets that we're looking to invest that tax increment in. We did not ask about infrastructure utilities. You know, I feel like a lot of people probably don't, aren't really concerned about the water or sewer. It'll take care of itself. So we focused on mobility, place making and economic development. Probably not surprising, mobility came out with 40, 47% as a number, number one priority. And then other input received, and this was basically in the meetings with all the, all the entities I mentioned earlier. So there are concerns, I'll talk to concerns first. So density and tall buildings. I think that's somewhat up for debate, what's a tall building? I wouldn't think, say a four stories is a tall building. Others, others would, but there seem to be more acceptance of it closer to the note, the designated nodes and then the interstitial areas. Traffic cutting through neighborhoods was a concern as this kind of compact mixed use builds out. Displacement of affordable housing, heard that a lot to your earlier question, Madam President. Big boxes and chain stores, there's not a lot of appetite for any of that along the corridor. Revenue being shifted from one end of the district to the other potentially. And I'll address this with a later slide. And then increasing property taxes as a result of the district. Loss of revenue for police, fire and schools. ACHD expressed a concern about federalizing the corridor, about putting more federal funds and restrictions that come with them in there. The flip side of that coin, what, what there is a desire for. So there was an appetite for mixed use, definitely for mixed income and affordable housing, not luxury. Landscape buffers and green space that, that was particularly popular along the corridors, getting landscape buffers in there. Ground floor uses that activate the street level in certain areas. That came up at Colister. Businesses that are oriented to the neighborhood, to the neighborhoods and not commuters or out of towners. Someone mentioned the post office at Colister wanting to save that. From a use perspective, it's also a historic building as well, but particularly as a neighborhood use. And then there was a comment about a, an application for a motel. And that's the kind of use that the neighborhoods didn't really want to see because it, someone in the neighborhood is not going to use the motel. Desire for public plazas in third places. And then community space with the neighborhood schools and the Boise School District brought this up in particular with TAF. They're going to plan to renovate it probably with their next school bond. So, and possibly with Lowell as well, leveraging some community space there when the school's not in session. So I'm going to walk you through some framework diagrams here, but they're based on, on the input that we received as well as previous projects. They do seek to implement that State Street TOD plan and consider other quarter planning projects. And what I would say, another point, the economic feasibility study, the draft you have, Penex four, page 22, there's a long laundry list of projects in there. This is basically just putting them on, onto a map so you can see where there are. They do fall into five buckets. Mobility, infrastructure, place making, economic development and special projects. Special projects is a kind of a smaller one, and that's going to be very opportunity based. We can't tell developer or property owner to do historic preservation, but we can help them out if they do decide to. We got five maps here covering the seven nodes. And we'll start at the east end. The big one's the ITD campus. So this is, not to get too into details, road configurations, move around. The ITD headquarters building is fairly significant. It would, there's a good chance it would be preserved and, and there would be some interest in getting that view shed from State Street preserved with it. But we anticipate spending a fair amount on roads and infrastructure down here. Transit stations, there's a primary at Whitewater Park, a secondary up there at Veterans Park. Or Veterans Parkway, sorry. And potentially structured parking down at the ITD campus as well as some public space. Feel free to let me know if you have any questions on any of these. Next is up at Colister. There's the TOD plan anticipated two transit pairs here. One down sort of by Sycamore Street and another one up at Marketplace. If there are no questions, I'll move on. So next is Pierce Park. This is kind of an hourglass in the corridor, just because a lot of it is built out and we don't anticipate a, a lot more development in the area. But we do see opportunity to potentially get some additional local street connectivity in. And then a transit station at the Pierce Park, the future realigned four way. Here we've got Bogart and Glenwood stations. Glenwood actually has two, one east of Glenwood and one at Saxton, sort of by the Walmart. And then up at Bogart Lane.
Matt, thank you. On that one, I know that there's been some study of what to do with that intersection by ITD. Did you have any discussion with them about whether it would make a difference in their choice if we had a URD that might be able to participate in, especially the idea of splitting it into a couple that creates a road in front of the existing development so that the left turns are split off from the the intersection at Glenwood itself. Was there any discussion about, about that intersection or was it just focused on the development around it?
Is this specific, is this at Glenwood? Sorry?
Yeah, yeah.
I know ACHD and ITD are, let's say, working on a intersection concepts there.
Recognizing that, would it make a difference if we had a URD that could help participate in that?
Potentially, if they're talking about something like new local streets that we could, that we could help with.
Yeah. Okay, so I just wanted to put that on the table. So we were thinking about it.
So, oh, Karen brings up a good point. So over here, we're all on the north side. So once we get south of that, south right of way, there's not a lot we could help with, sorry.
Okay.
I don't know that it's highly likely, we think possibly if, if the North Gate were to see some infill, some intensification, there might be potentially structured parking there. And then lastly, Horseshoe Bend, and you can see between Horseshoe Bend and Bogart is probably where there's the greatest opportunity to get some, some local street connectivity. And really reduce the number of access points on the State Street. And here's where it'd make the most sense because it's the highest speed part of the quarter. So I'll walk you through the economic feasibility really quick. It's a lot of numbers, a lot of assumptions. Let me know if you have any questions. So market demand absorption, this is the numbers that were in the 20 year forecast, basically broken down by corridor, quarter. They're more or less broken down fairly evenly through the quarters. Yeah, over the 20 year lifespan. Yeah, over the twenty year lifespan. So the projects that are currently proposed in the timeline are assumed to be done in year one, and then the remaining demand is evenly split over the last nineteen years. So. Our key assumptions. The levy rate you can see here, point. Oh, one, two, three, seven, zero. That's assumed constant life throughout the district. Four percent cost of borrowing. We assume a value growth rate of about two percent and then growth from value growth from projected new development. SB Friedman is taking another look at that levy rate due to the recent increase in valuation. So we, we will have that with the final feasibility study. And then projected costs that went with all those. Framework diagrams and appendix for the feasibility study. You can see. We identified approximately eighty million of capital costs, cost in quarter one will be paid out in cash flow year by year. While bonds are expected to be used in quarters two through four. District revenues are also projected to cover CCD operations, costs and interest and financing costs related to the bonds in those quarters two through four. So it's approximately thirty million in capital costs that are currently unfunded, but could be funded using alternative sources of revenue. And/or if the district overperforms projections. So this shows those expenditures by node, and I think this addresses kind of that geographic equity and the concerns that revenue. Tax increment that's collected at the west end of the district isn't just all going to be spent at Whitewater. It's spread pretty evenly throughout. So financing assumptions. Three percent annual escalation in construction funds. I know it doesn't seem like it'd be like that now, but. An average over years. And again, cash flow in the first quarter bonding in the final three quarters, and you can, you can see the rundown there, the issuance costs, and then the total issuance, each of those bonds. So, yeah, and that so issued at six, eleven and sixteen years into the district. So preliminary conclusions are that the total district cost currently bound, balanced with projected revenues. The current model assumes approximately six hundred thousand cumulative fund balance that would be available for dispersion at the end of the life of the district. Real quick on next steps. So after today, well, our final neighborhood meeting on Thursday. And then to online open house events on June twenty second, when it's, when at noon and one at six P M. As I mentioned, SB Friedman is going to be refining its numbers both through the recent pretty large valuation increases. We've seen in the county as well as accounting for potential impacts of HB three eighty nine. In July, we will present to our board the draft plan narrative and the final framework document. And finalize those based on the feedback that we receive at the open house and Pauline the open house. Then August, we are shooting to have our board consider the plan. For adoption by resolution. And should they adopt it, we would transmit it to the city and the underlying taxing districts, other underlying taxing districts. Keeping that transmittal within sixty days of the anticipated third calendar reading at city council. September, we're shooting for a P N Z in September to find conformity with the comprehensive plan. And if that happens, we would look to have the city count to request city council to consider this at a public hearing in October. And. If, should you adopt it, then obviously we go through the calendar readings. And then the final play, the ordinance will be published, transmitted to the taxing districts and recorded. That concludes my presentation. I'll stand for any comments or questions you have.
Any questions for Matt?
Mayor?
Councilmember Woodings.
Matt, I don't know if you can get back to the slide where you showed. The potential redevelopment of the corner of Whitewater Park Boulevard. You know, it was a while ago. Sorry. I should have asked my question back then. One of the concerns that we've heard is about a loss of affordable housing. And redevelopment of places where we currently have mobile home parks. In the court, in kind of the. West part of that little circle, is that the existing mobile home park that is there against the pond? And is that? Envisioned to stay? As part of redevelopment?
So Madam President, President, Councilman Woodings, so on the affordable housing, this, this question has come up. With it. It's. I don't know that I would get whether it's envisioned to stay or go. We, we can't dictate that. The property owner and you know, should they decide to sell, sell it to a developer, they would, would be the ones dictating that. When we include it with a district, though, what we can do is. Incent them. To. To try to replace that affordable housing. Potentially fund any relocation. If we carve it out of the district, the one thing we can't do is excise the adjacency. So if the ITD headquarters is blowing up. Just because there's a line there that excludes, you know, this mobile home park. That doesn't make it any less attractive to a developer. So. I, I think, I think we're probably heading in a direction where a consideration in us. Assisting any development is, is the net impact on affordable housing.
Thank you for that additional analysis. I have been hearing that time and time again, because State Street does have so many. Kind of older mobile home parks, and there's a lot of concern that those would. Be demolished and luxury housing would go up instead. So it's good to hear that this gives additional tools.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And I'd like to just follow up on Councilmember Wooding's question. So. You know, I think a lot of us on council, we, we take in a lot of information about what's going on in our community through social media. And. I know I did observe, I did follow one story of one woman in the Garden City area who was displaced. With that new luxury project that's going up near the river in Garden City. And it was very painful to watch this woman just try everything she could to find a way to leave her mobile home park. With no resources and. And also having to lay bare her situation to the public. And. I really admire that person for not giving up. I think they rallied, they called everybody that they could think of to try to get some help. And I think ultimately they ended up with a GoFundMe. And she was able to raise, I think, between eight and twelve thousand dollars so that she could hire a company to move her mobile home to another park. I had the, the good fortune of visiting with CCDC a couple of years ago, just to learn a little bit more about how. An urban renewal agency works. And at that time I did share a wish to see some more innovation about how do we. Preserve the socioeconomic diversity in our city. Because I wonder, you know, I love that you mentioned Ms. Irma and how we're, we're going to be able to save that house and. And, and have it be a historic marker in our city of her presence and, and of the African American community in Boise. But I wonder if she were alive now, if we wouldn't take those steps, if she would be able to stay in her home. And so I just wonder, is there, is there a move? To embrace diversity, inclusion and equity in the work of CCDC moving forward? Is there an effort to be even more innovative in, in this work? So that we can keep the people that comprise our city. You know, we have artists, we have all sorts of interesting folks in our city. But I would say that part of that cultural fabric is folks who live at a social, at a lower socioeconomic level and just don't have the resources. Unless they do what my friend Joyce Samms did, which is go to the public, use social media, use a source like GoFundMe. To try to maintain their lives in some form or fashion. So all that is to say, I have lived in Boise for over thirty years and I have seen how beautiful it has become. But I do know that there is a price for that and it does come with displacement. And I'm wondering. As innovative as we are, can we also find a way? To partner with those folks in our community who do want to have affordable housing? And maybe it isn't preserving the mobile home park, but maybe it is. Finding a way to create housing that may temporarily displace folks, but that can keep them in the neighborhood. So I guess that's just more of a comment and a question and a request. As a grateful community member who, who has enjoyed seeing the beautification of our city. But is concerned about the folks who live at the lower level of our socioeconomic status. Thank you, Matt.
Madam President, Councilwoman Sanchez, I would say we do have. We have earmarked funds at each of the nodes for land acquisition. I think it's fair to say that the number one priority of that is going, is incenting. Not strictly affordable housing, but mixed income. Housing. It's, you know, I, I don't know that it's stretched, given what we're going through to say it's. Probably not enough to fix all that, but it is a big focus of, of the economic development portion of this.
Any other questions? So Matt, just so I understand if going forward. The next steps will be public outreach, going to the CCDC board. All of that, of course, will be a public process. We won't get it back officially at city council. Until October for action. Will there be some kind of a update presentation and or memo in between now and then?
Madam President, just tell me what you'd like to see. I'm happy to come.
Guessing after the public outreach and after the discussion of the CCDC board, it would be great to understand. For city council to understand where that's at before it goes to P and Z.
Sure.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick question. I noticed in the slides, there didn't seem to be a slide when you went through. So I think I saw Councilmember Woodings writing them down, but I don't think that there was a slide for some of the concerns that the community shared with about affordable housing. Would it be possible at some point at a later date to make sure that there's a slide in case folks don't watch the YouTube video?
Sure, I can put those on it.
Great, thank you so much.
Right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, we'll talk a little bit more about the calendar. If it's better to come back before it goes to CCDC board. Because they'll be finalizing it then. So I don't know if there's input, we might want it before that part, because then it's kind of heading through the process. So we, we might come back before then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That makes, that makes sense. Thanks a bunch. All right, we are on to item number two, which is the Water Renewal Utility Financial Strategy. We have Heather and Steve, it looks like. Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for the time this afternoon. My name is Steve Burgos. I'm the Public Works Director and with me is Heather Buchanan, who is our Chief Administrative Officer in Public Works. And we're going to give you a presentation on a proposed financial approach to fund the Water Renewal Utility Plan that was approved back in October of twenty twenty. Just a quick agenda, we will provide a short review of the Water Renewal Utility Plan, what was in that, what was approved in October. I'll provide some rate context setting, just to give you a sense for where, where rates are in the valley, both in the valley, but also regionally within the Northwest. And then I'll turn it over to Heather. She's going to review the funding options, both a cash only scenario as well as a blended cash and bond scenario. She'll also provide an option comparison when we look at impact on residential rates. And then I'll provide an overview of the policy considerations and then a summary and recommendation. And then I'll give you an overview of next steps for the process. So just as a reminder, back in October of twenty twenty, council, mayor and council approved the Water Renewal Utility Plan. Before I give an overview of what was in the plan, I do want to mention upfront, we are obliged to treat wastewater and sometimes it comes, the question comes up on. What is the plan focused on? The plan is focused on treating wastewater, which we are obliged to do. So the Clean Water Act is the federal law. That mandates that we treat our wastewater to specific standards that are identified in our NPDS permit, our National Pluton Discharge Elimination System permit. So the Clean Water Act is the federal law that mandates that we do so. In addition, the DEQ has regulations related to our planning process. So for example, when a city starts to approach eighty five percent of using its total capacity to treat wastewater. The DEQ regulations require us as cities in the state of Idaho to develop a utility plan to ensure that we have both the capacity to, to treat additional flows. But also the ability, the technology, the process to meet those permit requirements at those higher flows. And then certainly, last but not least, the citizen expectations in Boise are high. We heard that very clearly. When we went through the utility planning process and their expectations of us to protect the river. In many ways, they described our works, our work as kind of we are the, the vanguard, the protectors of the river. And we take that very seriously. So I wanted to make sure we mentioned that upfront. That what we're going to present to you that was approved in the plan, it is not kind of, it isn't an obligation that we have to treat the wastewater. So the utility plan that was passed back in October highlighted many components. The first is for our existing system, we have significant capital replacement. We have an aging system. For example, the Land Street facility was built back in the, the late forties, early fifties. That facility is now over seventy years old and we need to replace that facility. Replacing the entirety of Land Street is not an inexpensive endeavor. In addition, we have about a thousand miles of pipe under the city of which several areas are over a hundred years old. We need to start replacing those assets as well. And then the other key component we have moving forward is the growth that we're having. We need to bring on new capacity to manage the growth. So between growth. And replacing aging assets, that's well over two thirds of our investment that's needed in the next two years. That's kind of the meat and potatoes for our utility. In addition, we have the regulatory requirements that we know are coming, additional regulatory requirements. And then we have what we heard back from citizens, their expectations on a recycled water program to start to address things like climate change. Identifying an additional water supply, keeping that water local here in Boise. So in order to do so, you can see what we have on the, on the map here. We're going to develop first those, those two primary. Objectives, replacing aging assets and adding capacity. We're going to do part of the added capacity by building a third facility proposed in the southeast. We're proposing that that be an industrial recycled water program. They'll also have an aquifer recharge component to that. When we start developing a new water supply, we can put that in the aquifer for storage. And then the fourth facility, probably in the mid twenty thirties, we're projecting to need additional capacity. It'll be a fourth facility. Again, all this new capacity, approximately ten million gallons a day of new capacity. We're going to develop it so that it's a recycled water program. So our ask moving forward, we got the approval on the utility plan. Now we're asking, how best do we want to fund the utility plan that we're obliged to meet under the Clean Water Act? And so as I look at the plan and I, I kind of put that on paper from a financial perspective. These are the projections of the capital spend that we're going to need over the next twenty years. Based on the plan that was approved by council. And as I mentioned before, you can see the, the colored bars are the amount of investment per funding driver. So for example, the regulatory piece, that's our blue bar, the planned repair and replacement or replacing aging infrastructures are gray bar. The capacity needs for the growing city is the orange bar, and then the, the kind of lighter blue is the community expectations. That's the, the recycled water program, for example. So you can see that we're, we're going to average about eighty million dollars a year on our annual average spend. To put that in perspective, we're spending about twenty million dollars a year now and over the last, say, decade. So it's, it's not, it's a significant increase and over the life of the implementation of the utility plan. We're projecting, we're going to need to spend. We're projecting, we're going to need to spend approximately one point one five billion in today's dollars. Now that's appreciated as a big number. It is though. When we hear the national dialogue on the infrastructure bills that are being discussed in DC, this is a very common issue in, in most major cities. Our infrastructure was built in the fifties and sixties and it's starting to age out and those replacement costs are not insignificant. So that's our twenty year capital plan. Now I'd like to give you a sense for, as we look forward to the rates that are needed to, to fund this plan. I wanted to set the context with our current rates.
Steve, before you go there, I'd like to ask a quick question if I could back on the other slide. So the orange bars are capacity. Are we confident that our current rate structure captures the cost? Of the new customers to the system so that we're not also adding that into the cost to the existing customers? And I just want to make sure that, you know, folks who are, are listening online or wondering about that have an answer.
Madam Mayor, thanks for the question. Yes, we. A very strict tenant in Idaho state law is that growth pays for growth. And so while we invest in building new capacity, we recoup that cost through the connection fees that folks pay over time. And those connection fees are indexed to what we refer to as our ENR index, the Engineering News and Records. So as costs go up, those connection fees go up related to the cost to replace those assets. And so that connection fee is the way that we recoup the way growth pays for growth. When they connect into the system, they're obliged to, to pay for their little portion of capacity.
Thank you.
So the context on the rates in the valley, you can see the chart to the left. You get a sense for who's charging what, the average monthly residential bill across the valley. I'd note that the numbers for all the other cities is our twenty twenty numbers. The city of Boise is our twenty twenty-one number, our average monthly residential bill. And you can say, you can see we're right in the middle of the pack for average local bill. And then if we expand the, a look at the regional cities within the Northwest, you see Spokane at forty-eight. Seattle at ninety-two, Portland at sixty-five. So the average regional is actually twice the amount of our average local wastewater utility bill.
Steve?
Yes.
Where's WBSP?
Madam Mayor, council member, that's West Boise Shore District.
Okay, do we currently treat their water?
We do, and we're, that's, we're working on potential next steps with West Boise.
Thank you.
And so a couple of takeaways from the slide, rates are increasing across the valley. I have the example and this isn't to pick on NAPA in any way, but it is to suggest that. Looking at their projected rate increases, they'll be in the neighborhood of seventy-two dollars per month by twenty twenty-five. And I know based on conversations with the other public works directors in the valley, they're all considering different ways to account for both growth. But, but also replacing some of those aging assets. So other cities are considering their options for rate increases. Okay, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Heather and she's going to walk us through the, the two major funding options that we considered and then comparing the two options based on how they impact rates.
Alright, thank you, Steve. Let me get to the next slide. So Mayor, council members, we've considered two scenarios. The first scenario is a cash only scenario, and this is traditionally how we funded our water renewal investment. Each year we consider what our annual rate increases would need to be to fund the capital and operational expenses we have for that year. We always project out ten to twenty years. Right now we're doing a twenty year projection. So. We historically have adjusted rates each year to pay for what we need to spend and fund for our capital plan. So with our twenty year investment that Steve showed you on one of the previous slides. We are anticipating that this would equate to a significant upfront rate increase, which I'll show you in a couple of slides. So. It causes a near term, really initial bump up in those rates so that we can fund through that twenty year window. The next scenario then would be adding bond financing to that cash scenario. So we would. Finance a portion of the overall capital improvement plan with bond financing. That would require us to get voter approval to do so. The benefit of doing this is several things and we'll. Discuss a few of them here and Steve can explain a few more later. So one thing is that it helps to levelize the rate impacts. So the rate impacts become more gradual over time, much more predictable. Bond financing helps to act of a bit of a shock absorber. So as we, each year as we're making changes to our capital improvement plan. Those changes turn into reflections in our rate increases. Bond financing would result in a lesser change because we're amortizing the cost of that change over a longer period of time. So it doesn't result in a larger increase that cash financing may. And then the, another benefit that we're seeing is that the rate pair affordability. Since the near term rates with bond financing would be less, that helps us with the affordability that we're seeing in our program. So as I mentioned, the bond election would be required to finance if we were to go that route. So next week during the budget workshop, we'll be asking for a motion for you to approve the strategy for us to move forward with the. These scenarios as we're proposing today. So if you do approve that motion, then we would move forward. And we would go to the election in November, asking the voters to approve bond financing. If we received a yes vote in the election, that would result in a nine point nine percent rate increase. If we had a no vote, we would assume that voters approved the cash scenario and that would be an up to fifty-three percent rate increase. So those two are not additive. We would then implement the nine point nine at the beginning of the fiscal year, assuming that. We would move forward with the lesser of the rate increases. So that'd be October first, the bond election would happen. And then we would implement the differential if we did get the no vote and that would be effective January first. So. We would be issuing revenue bonds if we're allowed to move forward. So revenue bonds require a fifty percent plus one voter approval.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Heather, on this, would we be able to explain to the voters that a no vote would mean fifty-three percent increase? We could put that maybe even in the ballot language perhaps?
Mayor, council member, that's a good question. And yes, I think we're working currently on a draft of some, of the ballot language and the explanation that goes along with that. And we're trying to be very specific of a yes vote equals this and a no vote equals. So being able to differentiate what they mean.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm to kind of tag on to that. I know that this is not your wheelhouse at all, Heather. But I just want to note that in the upcoming November second election, half the city. Won't be voting for a member of city council and this could be one of the only things on their ballot, if not the only thing on their ballot. So that could create a really interesting dynamic. On the municipal election and just how that's going to change. So. I think it would be very nice for people to have something to go vote for regardless.
Yeah, council members, that's a really good point, so.
So Heather, if you'd go back to the last slide, I think there's a, an important point here. That I hope will become part of the conversation during the election. And it goes back to my question to Director Burgos about growth paying for itself. And if we don't issue bonds. Those of us who live here today are going to pay full freight for all of these improvements. Even though the people who are moving here tomorrow are the ones who are going to primarily benefit from it, or at least benefit as much as we do. And if we do, or if we are able to bond for this, then we can spread out the cost of that. Not just to the existing rate payers, but to those future ones who are helping drive the, the need for it. Is that, am I correct in that?
Mayor, council member, yes. And I think I can demonstrate that a little bit in one of my future slides, but what you're referring to is. We call intergenerational equity. So we're trying to align the lifespan of our assets to the financing program as well. So our, the assets that we put in place lasts for decades. You know, Steve was talking about our Lander Street. Treatment facility that was put in place in the forties, we're just now replacing some of those assets. So. They've lasted us for decades and done a great job, but we need to replace them. So. If we're able to bond finance, it does, we're able to amortize that cost over a longer period of time. And so you're right, the near term costs for those of us paying right now would be less and we pay over a longer period of time. The, as a new customer comes and connects to the system, they do pay, they buy into our system, so to speak. So they pay a connection fee to repay us. But for that capacity, but. The timing of that is definitely important.
Madam Mayor. Everybody's been so nice about it. The way that I view this is the, the question is, do people who. Live in Boise now and will die in the next ten years or twenty years, want to buy? Water treatment services that people who are not born yet and haven't even moved to Boise will be using. That's really the question. Should the people who will be moving here in the future have to pay for the stuff that they use? Or should the people who've lived here for their whole life and won't get to use it, have to buy it for those people in the future? I think that's really what it boils down to.
Yeah, council member, well said. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Yes, thank you. And I just want to say thank you for being mindful of those members of our community. Who, who, if we were to go with that other option with a very high rate increase, that would be. A devastating hardship for them. So thank you for being mindful of that.
Mayor, council member, thank you for that. And that is definitely one of the thing considerations. We're trying to. Keep an eye on affordability. We know that the choices are difficult, but affordability is definitely a key tenet of what we're looking at. So on the bond election process, so in July, we will be coming forward. If you do approve the bond strategy next week. We'll be coming forward in July to ask you to approve the bond amount. We're still working on. That exact amount that we want to go forward and ask the voters to approve. So we'll ask you for that approval in July. Then ballot language would be approved in August. We would submit that ballot language to the county in September. They would begin mailing absentee ballots in early October. Then early voting would begin mid-October and the all important election day would be November second. So, option comparison then. So the two scenarios are here stacked together. The cash and bond scenario is on the top of the chart, cash only is on the bottom. Two things to note here, fiscal year twenty twenty-two would be the portion that we would be approving with the. Budget workshop and the rate hearing this year, the numbers that are shown for fiscal year twenty-three out through fiscal year twenty forty. They're shown in green because they are estimated numbers. Our whole financial plan has a lot of assumptions in it and. A lot of assumptions around construction costs, inflation rates and so forth. So those assumptions are subject to change. We revisit those annually. So it's likely that the rate increases that we are showing in fiscal year twenty-three out through twenty forty, especially as we get further into the plan. They will vary that. So this is an estimate based on what we know now. So for fiscal year twenty-two, we've already talked about a nine point nine percent rate increase, fiscal twenty-three would be up to fifty-three percent. From there, the two scenarios from fiscal twenty-three through fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, the scenarios are very similar. Both would require. Roughly a nine percent to a nine point nine percent increase for that window of time. And then starting in fiscal twenty-eight, the cash and bond scenario would continue with roughly five percent rate increases going forward. The cash only scenario would have one percent rate increases roughly going forward. So again, those are estimated, but giving you an idea of how the two scenarios compare.
Madam Mayor.
This particular slide, I think does a disservice. To understanding the cash only option because it shows it as a percentage. I wonder if we could show this as a dollar amount. And maybe you have that already, but. Nine percent on top of today plus fifty-three percent is a bigger dollar amount than nine point nine percent. And the overall rate is a higher rate than what you'd be paying with the cash plus bond, correct?
Mayor, council member Clegg, I think in a couple of slides, I'll show just what you're asking for.
Okay, great.
Yeah, good, good point. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. The second point, very similar to the council president, the mayor's observation is that. Something you can lose on this slide if you're not paying attention is that the last column is twelve years. The first columns are only five years. And so the bulk of the, of the. If everybody stacks up their bills for this whole period of time, most of that mountain of paper is going to incur in that last box. And so the cash only scenario is one percent. Which is below average inflation in our country, which means in real dollars, if we go with cash. Those people in the future for whom all of these water renewal services were purchased by people in twenty twenty-two will be paying less money. So not only will they be, you know, paying a low bill, but they will, their bill will get smaller in terms of the real purchase power of the dollars as time goes on. So that is another, in my mind, another generational equity issue to keep in mind as we think about cash and bond or cash only financing.
Madam Mayor and council member, can I clarify one thing there as well? In that last column, it does represent a multi-year, the rate increase that's shown there would be annually. So it'd be five, the four point nine percent each year during that timeframe and the one percent, the same thing. So.
Thank you. Yeah, I wasn't, I didn't do a very good job of being clear. If, thank you. If each year from twenty-eight to forty, everybody's. Bill goes up by one percent under the cash only model. Just average projected inflation in the United States says that the amount of value they're spending is actually going down, even though there's a one percent increase every year.
Thank you, council member. Good point. Alright, and so then comparing the two scenarios in a cumulative fashion, the cash and bond scenario for the first five years would be. Roughly a sixty percent rate increase. The cash only scenario would be roughly a one hundred and sixteen percent increase. Cumulative over the twenty years, the cash and bond scenario, because we're paying interest costs over that timeframe, would be a two hundred and thirty percent increase. The cash only scenario, a hundred and fifty percent increase. So I think in the next slide, they'll, I'll show you the rate impacts for residential customers and. It'll demonstrate a bit of what council members and madam mayor were talking about. So first of all, this graph is then showing what an average residential customer's bill is. And the different colors of bars are showing the different scenarios. So the gray bars are the cash only scenario. The green bars are the cash and bond scenario. So currently in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the average customer pays roughly thirty-seven dollars a month. When we're going out for the first five years, the cash only scenario, as we mentioned before, is more expensive than the bond scenario. And just for comparison, in one of Steve's slides, he was talking about where NAPA is going to be in fiscal year twenty twenty-five. If you look here for our cash only scenario, we would be roughly in the same place that they're expected to be in twenty twenty-five, about seventy-two, seventy-three dollars. So this is the first five year picture. So going up, but the bond helps us keep the rates a little bit lower for the first five or six years. Then this slide is showing the longer picture. So the estimated rate increases over the twenty year window. So again, gray is cash only, green is cash and bond. So you can see that in the near term, the gray bars are higher. So the rate increases in the near term are higher for the cash only scenario. But to council member Bajant's point, if you look at from fiscal year twenty twenty-seven out through fiscal year twenty forty. The gray bars flatten out. So there's very little change between fiscal year twenty twenty-seven to fiscal year twenty forty. The value that that, those customers paying in those different years. Though what the, the value of the system that they're getting is very different. In twenty forty, we will have completed, you know, a recycled water program. Our third facility will have been completed by that time. We'll be starting into our fourth facility. We will be doing enhanced river projects, you know, replace a significant amount of our system. So there's more value. The system's going to be more robust in that timeframe. In comparison to fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, that rate pair is essentially paying more for the lesser value. Or the same amount for the lesser value. So I think that demonstrates what council member Bajant's talking about. And the, right now, the value of inflation is. Less, or inflation is more than what we're seeing in overall interest rates over time. So the cash and bond scenario is higher in the long term, but it's a much more gradual rate increase as we go forward. I'll turn it back to Steve for the policy considerations.
Thanks Heather, Madam Mayor. The policy considerations that we wanted to bring up, I'll walk through each of these, the near. The near-term affordability, I think we demonstrated based on the rate increases on the cash and bond versus cash only. You saw the near-term rate increases are significantly less. So that's, that's certainly from a policy standpoint, helps on the blended cash and bond. We already discussed generational equity that we would be spreading the costs out over future users that may or may not be in Boise. So the blended cash and bond delivers generational equity. The rate predictability, Heather alluded to our ability to withstand rate shocks. So if we, for example, say we had to move a couple of projects forward that were significant investments, our ability to borrow that money can help us reduce the potential impacts on rates. If we were going cash only, we would quickly have to raise that cash through a rate increase. So the rate predictability is greater with the blended cash and bond. The revenue reliability, I think between the two options are pretty, pretty straightforward. We get revenue, we have folks pay the bills with our current approach on cash. Similarly, the blended cash and bond, we know there's a lot of interest in the municipal bond market. We've had several conversations, just high-level thinking through and doing some studying on what kind of money is available potentially from investors. Lots of interest in municipal bonds. So I think the revenue on both the cash only and the blended cash and bond are pretty consistent. We know those will be there. A long-term cost, this is much like a home mortgage. If you can pay cash, that's great, but a lot of folks can't do that. So you're financing and you will pay a little bit more longer term. So cash only has the advantage of not paying that interest. And then finally, leveraging the low cost of capital, Heather alluded to interest rates are historically low. For example, the city of Nampa, when they took out debt bond election they had back in 2017, they were able to work with a DEQ state revolving fund and get a loan at one point six eight percent, I believe, which is, is below inflation. So, so the cost of capital currently is extremely low. And so we just had an interview with a financial advisor. We're working through potentially hiring a financial advisor. If you all give us the green light on, on the bond election, that's something that keeps coming up over and over again, that the cost of capital is, is really good right now. So that gives you a sense of the, of the policy considerations that we've been thinking through as we consider the different piece, the two different scenarios of how we can finance the plan. And then to Councilmember Sanchez's point, this is not lost on us. All things being equal, I, we wouldn't want to have to necessarily ask for a rate increase. But the reality is, we are obliged to treat the wastewater. We know we have improvements that are needed, but we want to do so with sensitivity to folks that are in the lower incomes brackets that we know will be impacted by this. So certainly the bond financing rate upfront is a very good cost affordability strategy. A lot of cities use that to help manage those upfront rate increases. One of the things we're going to be working on in the near term and in the future, we have existing programs, existing affordability programs. We want to make sure people are taking advantage of that. But in addition to that, staff is looking at different options moving forward, both short-term and long-term on the affordability programs and different ideas. So we've had several calls, for example, with the San Antonio Water System. They're considered a national leader on affordability programs. We're trying to learn from others. There's some good examples out there. We don't want to reinvent the wheel if we don't have to, but we certainly will come back to you with some ideas on longer-term affordability. And just to note, we've had kind of a jumpstart to our short-term affordability through the COVID relief funds. The emergency rental assistance program can be used for utility bills and people are using that. It's been great to see. So that's really been a nice stopgap here in the near term with the impacts of COVID nineteen. That's really jumpstarted some of the affordability discussions. Okay, so in summary, key points, we are obliged to treat wastewater. The capital investments that we've identified in the plan become the major driver to meet those obligations. The ask we have moving forward for council is how best to fund those improvements to meet our obligations. So it's staff recommendation to pursue a new financing strategy using cash and bonds to meet obligations while balancing affordability. And just to give you a sense for the, the next kind of key, key dates on the timeline. Heather mentioned next week, we'll be actually requesting the formal approval of council to proceed in the direction of a bond election. In July, we'll have the city budget and rate hearing workshop. August, September, we're shooting for an update on affordability programs. So as we move forward, you'll have a sense for how we want to increase the applicability and the availability of affordability assistance. Heather mentioned our plan is by October one to have the nine point nine percent rate increase. And then November second will be the bond election. A yes vote is no further rate change for FY twenty-two. And a no vote would mean we'd have an additional rate, rate increase to take the total rate increase for FY twenty-two to fifty-three percent. Again, reiterating, the nine point nine and fifty-three are not additive. Nine point nine again gets rolled into the fifty-three for a total of fifty-three for FY twenty-two. With that, I will stand for questions. Thank you.
Questions? Councilmember Widdings.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, not a question, but a comment. I've been a nerd about this for a very, very long time now. And I'm so glad that we're finally coming to the point where it's like, all right, we get to ask the question. I'm very much in support of the cash and bond scenario. I think that it really makes sense as far as the folks that are going to benefit from the infrastructure upgrades and growth. And, you know, yeah, like everyone would love to pay cash, but we also don't want to price folks out of living here from a utility standpoint. So I think that it makes a ton of sense. And again, I think we had this conversation last time you were here talking about this. It doesn't obligate us to take all of the bonding if other funding becomes available. So I think that it's a really smart way to go forward. It gives us a lot more flexibility and really protects our rate payers now, ensuring that we are compliant well into the future. So thank you for all of the work the Public Works has done on this. I think that it's been a really tremendous effort and fabulous to watch and finally see the fruit of the conversation.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Bajin.
Yeah, I'll also speak pretty strongly in favor of the blended financing model for a couple of reasons. First, I see it as a choice between essentially two products for funding this mandatory obligation that we have to pay for. And that's a, that's a point that Steve made that's really important. You know, we have to do this stuff. We have to buy it. It's not like we're getting a shiny new car. We need the toilets to flush. We also, the law says we have to meet the Clean Water Act and DEQ standards. So then the question is how best to pay for it. And there's two products, really. One is slightly cheaper and much more terrible in every way. It will cause rate shocks. It will prevent our ability to plan. It will make us be subject to inflation risk in this long-term planning, financial planning picture. And it will hit rate payers early with the biggest costs at the beginning, which for long-term household financial planning is a terrible thing to do. For long-term rate stability and predictions, it's a terrible thing to do. And then finally, there's a generational equity piece. It will cause present rate payers to buy things for people who do not exist in Boise yet. And in return, those people who do not exist in Boise yet will not have to pay for anything. So there's a fairness issue. On the flip side, with the blended debt cash model, we get smooth and predictable rates. We get the benefit of borrowing somewhere around four percent, which is really close to free money. We'll be relatively insulated from inflation as time goes on. In the event that all the crazy pundits are right, we will be locked in, we'll be better able to meet those bond obligations. It will smooth all of the cost of the entire project, like I said a moment ago. And it will also preserve the flexibility to pay for things in other ways. So if we decide that we find a bunch of cash, we want to use cash, we always can. So that's, you know, using the blended model doesn't even throw away the other option, but it gives us a stable, predictable, long-term, more cost-effective, better financial model for citizens that's generationally equitable and that still preserves a cash option. So, you know, I wouldn't say it's a no-brainer because it's a pretty brainy topic. But I think when you dig in, you really do see it's the difference between a slightly cheaper, much, much worse way of doing it and a slightly more expensive in the long-term total dollar value, vastly superior way of doing it. So I'm very strongly in support of the blended model.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Thompson.
I just want to nominate Councilmember Bajin as our bond mascot.
Well, it's better than parking.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um. Steve, you and your staff have done an incredible job at preparing us to make this decision in a very knowledgeable way, you know, for several months now. And so thank you for, for all the time that you've put into making sure that we understand, you know, the decisions that we're making. I'm absolutely in support of everything that every single one of our council members have already said. I do have one question. The question is just, I know it's come up just a little bit in some of our Public Works Commission meetings, and it's the conversation around federal funding and how potential federal funding might affect this. And I would assume that this would still be the path that we would be pursuing, even if federal funding would come in. And I guess my question is just, do you have any thoughts or insight or? Yeah, on, on that topic of federal funding and how that may affect between now and when an election may take place or a vote.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, thank you for the question. Yes, we're, we're tracking it very closely. We've had several phone calls with EPA. They have various funding programs that, that currently exist, but also there may be additional funding through the infrastructure bill. Kathy Griesmeyer in the mayor's office has been amazing to work with. She is on top of it and helping us navigate a lot of those kind of intergovernmental affairs. So the, to the, to your question, we would, if we went forward with the cash and bond and say we got, you know, the opportunity to grant for say a hundred million dollars, then that would mean we wouldn't have to borrow that hundred million dollars. So, so to Councilmember Bajin's point, going the cash and bond route does not preclude us from getting access to some of the federal grants that may come forward or getting access to increased funding for existing programs that maybe EPA is, is, is pushing or, or offering to us. So yeah, we would keep our options open in short.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. Yeah. Thank you, Steve. Thanks for, you know, making that very clear for us and how this is still the, this is still the option and potentially the best option going forward, even if those funds were able to come through. So I appreciate that. And I know that your team is, you know, following those very closely. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council member.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Steve. Thank you also for highlighting the fact that even, even with that reduced rate increase, if we were to go with the cash and bond route, that it would still be a bit of a hardship for those folks who are really at that lower income level. And, and thank you for thinking about how we can highlight those resources that might exist just to, to help them cover that, that increase, because I think you're correct. There are folks who unfortunately suffer in silence and are, they're not willing to do what the woman that I mentioned, when the gentleman from CCDC was here. They're not willing to be public about their need because unfortunately, in our society, we shame people in need. And so I think anything we can do to make sure folks know that they're, they're not going to be left out in the cold, even with a minimal, but for some of us to be a minimal increase, that we're still going to be able to help them. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, Steve, one last comment from me. You know, again, thanks for the presentation, good information. I think a lot of good points have been made. Though, one point that no one has really talked about is that the citizens, the residents of Boise in nineteen forty-seven had the foresight to pass a bond so that we could build the Lander Street Wastewater Treatment Plant, now the water renewal facility. And that bond allowed this city for the next sixty-some years, almost seventy-some years to go on a cash-only basis. And now it's our generation's turn to have that same foresight so that the residents of the city of Boise can enjoy clean water, equitable access to rate structures and clean environment, we hope, for another seventy years before another generation's asked to do that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to take us back even farther than that, I believe, to the League of Women Voters who voted to have municipal wastewater treatment in the first place. Was that before the seventies? Oh, forty-seven. I'm sorry. I thought you said the nineteen seventies. I was like, hey, it's like way earlier. Yeah. Which is super cool. Yeah. So thank you for bringing that up. And I'm sorry that.
No, that's okay.
I love watching people try to challenge Elaine on Boise City History. Madam Mayor, one other question for Steve, and that is, I just don't know, is this the type of, is this going to result in a financial product? Is it the type of thing that a citizen of Boise could invest in?
Madam Mayor, council member, that's an interesting question. Let me get back to you. I don't know.
Fair enough. I was just imagining a really Public Works nerdy citizen who wants the best of the cash scenario and the best of the blended scenario, and then hedges the blended cost by buying the bond and then paying their rates steadily so that they end up paying cash rates for the bond benefit product. And that is something that, you know, the average citizen probably wouldn't do, but it's something that some of our bigger rate payers might do. And if that makes it attractive to them in some way, that might be helpful.
My head hurts a little thinking about it, but let me, it's okay. Let me think about it. It's an interesting point.
That's what you get for having nerdy council members. Well, thank you. Anything more? Well, we look forward to the budget hearing and I look forward to talking about this publicly as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You bet. All right. With that, we do not have an executive session, so we will see everyone back here at six o'clock.